Email me the, oh yes.
All right, calling this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. This is the final meeting of.
Thank you very much. I'm so used to the mic sitting on the table. This is Ian Ross, Chair, calling the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. This is the final meeting of our fiscal year. That means next meeting we will be having elections for officers. The first item on the agenda is the city and county of Honolulu monthly reports. The first is the Honolulu Fire Department. Do we have a representative with us this evening?
Okay, please inform me with, say, join. We're going to move on to the Honolulu Police Department. Lieutenant Segusio, thank you for being with us. Just want to give you a heads up right now. We do have several presentations on the agenda, so we might have to keep our Q and A succinct this evening.
Definitely, I'm going to help you with that. So Lieutenant Segusio, representing the District One Community Area Responsibility. Sorry for taking the meeting in this fashion, but calls for service are definitely high right now, and we're dealing with this power outage. The lights are slowly coming back on, but we're still having to deal with the logistical nightmare that we're dealing with. So I'm just going to go right into the stats. Our motor vehicle thefts is 13 for the month of May. The previous month was 19. Burglaries were nine. Previous to that was eight. Thieves were 49. Previous to that was 47. UNVs or car break-ins were 15. Previous 14. Assaults are 10. Previous six. Six assaults were zero. Previous month was one. Graffiti cases were one. The month prior was zero. Drug offense arrests were three. Previous to that was four. Total cost per service for your particular area was 2,374 calls, compared to 2,305. So there's no criminal breaches to report at this point in time. And it's like I said, in town, they're slowly coming back on. The powers fully come back on. We're keeping our fingers crossed. Hopefully that Hiko can, you know, complete the work so that we can get these traffic lights back on. And it's going to lead me to the safety tip for the month of June regarding unattended drinks with summer upon us and more young adults going out and celebrating. We're asking our community members to be more aware of their beverages. This is a growing trend on the mainland of these types of cases. Cover your drinks and never leave it unattended. You know, don't accept any type of drinks unless it's directly coming from the staff or the establishment. Worst case scenario, if you do start feeling sick or becoming incapacitated, let someone know immediately, whether it be a friend or the staff, so that they can get you help as soon as possible. At this point in time, I'm going to yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board members or the public attendees.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant Segusio. We're going to open up questions to board members first. Any questions from the board? Okay, Richard, please go ahead.
Lieutenant, we've noticed somebody, I can't, I don't want to be too specific here. They're coming out of a building. A car pulls up. They hand them a little plastic bag. And we've seen this person do this repeatedly. Just the other day, I saw it again. So what, it could be drugs, or it could be, he could be selling who knows what off the internet, and it might be something not be drugs.
Totally, totally agree with you in those situations. Obviously, if it looks like a duck, walks like a duck, it is a duck. Go ahead and make contact with the Narco Vice Division. Usually when we get these calls from the public, they usually kind of expedite the complaints. So when you can call them, all the information you can provide to them, license plates, description, if you know the person that lives in the building, his name, and then the complaint section of the Narco Vice Division will go in and address it.
And second, really quickly, we saw a 12-year-old going down the street on a electric scooter. What, what's the situation with that?
In regards to these electric scooters, the law is kind of convoluted. We're still trying to, you know, there's, there's a lot of interpretation in regards to those types of laws, right? So I know that age, age in these particular situations is the defining factor. Also, like the Newton, the voltage, the speeds of these electric scooters. So with that being said, bicyclist, if you're under the age of, if I'm not mistaken, if you're not under the age of 16, you're supposed to be wearing a helmet when you're riding your bicycle on a public way, especially in the park. Do we often cite for those violations? I'm going to tell you right now, we don't usually cite or we'll usually address it, you know, with the parents and stuff like that, but we don't cite.
Thank you very much, Richard. Do we have any other questions from members of the board at this time? Not seeing any in person. Logan, do we have any hands up online? Okay, we're going to open up to the broader audience. Oh, we do have one. Okay, please go ahead. Deborah, we'll recognize you at this time.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Lieutenant Segusio, thank you. I'd like, if you could address or maybe potentially lead me into the right direction on cars parked illegally on the right-hand side of Baritania. This is basically in between Pensacola and Victoria Street. There's been multiple instances when I call the 911 non-emergency to report cars parked illegally because we cannot egress and ingress out of our driveways. And nobody, there's no response. One day, there was a car parked there all day on Saturday, and no response. Called four times and our security called once, but no response.
So in regards to that location, are there signs? I need to go and verify what time those signs are because I know there's parking on the right just prior to Chick-fil-A. If you're, and you're, you're building you're talking about, yeah, that Queen Victoria Building. But let me go verify the signage. But just like I said, any complaints in regards to police services? If you do not get serviced the way we're supposed, you think that we're supposed to be doing it, go ahead and request for a field supervisor. Have them respond to your location and meet up with them, yeah? And explain the situation to them so that you guys can get some resolution. Absolutely, call for a field supervisor.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you much, Lieutenant Segusio. Going to check you one more time with any other questions from people in the audience this evening. I very much appreciate the update. Thank you for the expedite report this evening. We'll see you again next month.
All right, absolutely. You guys have a great night.
Thank you. Logan, do we have the fire department? Okay, we're going to move on the agenda to Board of Water Supply.
Hi, good evening. I'm Stephen Norstrom with Board of Water Supply. Just wanted to let you know for the month of May, for the Makiki Neighborhood Board District, there were no main breaks to report. And our monthly report is, as you all know, we're working hard to ensure that the water served to our customers is safe to drink. So each year, we conduct thousands of tests on the water sources and the distribution system to ensure that the municipal water meets or exceeds all federal and state safe drinking water standards. And those results come as a report, which will be mailed to you by July 1st. If you live in an apartment building, it will go right to your association or whoever pays the water bill. And you can actually view that report on our website at BoardOfWaterSupply.com. And last month, Michelle did have a question that she brought to me about a possible presentation regarding our future with water. And so I'm working on that with our water master plan. So possibly I'll email you Chair to see if we can set something up in July. And then there was also a question about low water pressure on Green Street. And with all the development and stresses on the system, what is the Board of Water Supply doing to improve the infrastructure in this area? And just to let you know that customers who live on Green Street, 1011 to 1099, that address area, will experience lower pressure at around 40 PSI because of the elevation of the reservoir. The reservoir, the reservoir is lower than Green Street. That provides water for that location. And so 40 PSI is the range of the pressure for that area, and that is considered adequate based on the Board of Water Supply rules and regulations. So just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you very much. So just to clue everyone else in, the question before was with Red Hill and other water concerns. What is the initial impact on this and housing? As the state and the counties have been prioritizing development of housing, how do the kind of time horizons of these two limiting factors meet? So we very much look forward to a presentation on that. Certainly not in July, so think after July.
After July, okay, good. It gives us a little more time. Wonderful.
Absolutely. I'm going to open up to questions from board members first, and then we'll open up to the broader public after. Any questions from in-person board members? Yes, please go ahead, Richard.
About the low water pressure on Green Street. So I understand you have this 40 PSI, but it wasn't satisfactory for the people living there. What are future options?
You can get a pressure, a PRV, a pressure regulating valve to control your pressure, if you wish, if you want more pressure. But 40 is what's considered. I checked with our Water Service Division as well and checked with them with them, but that's considered average for that area.
So they'd have to get a plumber, pay whatever it would cost to get this device installed.
That's correct. Yeah, that's what you want, stronger pressure than 40.
Yeah. I want to do a relevant tag on to what Richard is asking. So I think there was a two-part to it, that the pressure is low, but also that the pressure recently decreased. Is there any way to like gauge or measure if, if that's true and to what degree from urine?
Well, last I checked, they went out and they measured that it was at 40 PSI, but I can bring it back and see if they can go out and check it again, but that was, you know.
Well, no, I may misunderstood here. So I think we probably believe you at the current PSI level. Do we know if it had been higher before the most recent developments?
Oh, that I don't know to have a check.
If there's some sort of way to check that out, I think that would be something that could be potentially pretty validating.
Okay.
And I also know you folks often offer tax credits and other opportunities for pressure and things like that. Is that something which you know of any tax credits that might exist?
That's a great question. I have no clue. I will have to go back and check on that. I will have Michelle report back next month.
We definitely appreciate your update, and we want to try to stay solution-oriented for the residents of the area.
I totally agree. Sounds great.
Okay, we're going to open it up to questions from the public as well. Is there anyone else have any questions for Board of Water Supply at this time?
Oh, Corinne, you have a question? Go, please, go ahead.
Just a brief comment. Our building also recently noticed a reduction in water pressure. And they're investigating it. They thought, so it was just interesting to learn that another building is experiencing the same thing. And I'll follow up to get more information.
What's, what's the address of your building?
1137 Wilder Avenue.
Okay. Yeah, most definitely.
All right. I think that might just about cover it. So thank you so much for that info. Oh, sorry, please go ahead. Can you come up to the microphone, please? I know it's a little daunting, but if you can come up to that microphone.
You can come up. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that was originally one of my questions as well with the low pressure.
Yes.
And we've noticed that a couple of the other buildings are putting in these, I don't know if it's valves, but pumps to actually, you know, bring more pressure to their, you know, buildings.
Correct.
But are you also saying that? Now it's on. Okay. All right. So my question was, are you expecting the property owners that have single resident houses to also put a pump into the system? Because the regulated valve is not going to do an increase. It'll regulate it down, but if you have it always maxed out, it's not going to bring any more pressure in. So you have to get a pump.
Yeah, well, regarding the Ford, like I mentioned earlier, regarding the 40 PSI, that's considered adequate. And so that's what's serving seeing that stretch of Green Street. It's because the reservoir is lower than the street, has nothing, what I was told, nothing to do with development. It's the placement of the reservoir to Green Street because it's lower, because we have a gravity fed system, so it's above the reservoir. So every folks that are on that Green Street will experience lower pressure. Folks that are lower than the reservoir will have normal or higher than 40 PSI pressure because they're lower than the reservoir because it's a gravity fed system.
But so no infrastructure is going to be increased to, you know, repair or do anything to that infrastructure? Because with all the, you know, new buildings and increased of, you know, people living in that area, you know, how is that going to be really?
So I was told that the development does not impact it. It's because of the placement of the reservoir. And again, it's that, that street, based on the rules and regs, when our crews went out there and tested the pressure, they're aware that it is lower than what other places are, but it's considered adequate based on our rules and regulations.
So Richard, what I asked for was the follow-up so we can maybe see if we can validate the experience.
I did have them come to my house, and it was actually like 30 to 35, you know, pressure, and they were looking into it, but nothing happened. But I'll follow up with them again.
Would you like, I could actually have somebody from our Board of Water Supply reach out to you?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I think we tried, are you Richard? Yeah, we tried to call, but there was no response, so yeah, we'll follow up.
I don't blame Richard. Everyone's getting so many spam calls these days.
Yeah, no, no, it's fine. Yeah. If you see 748-5000, that's us. It's not a spam.
Great. Well, I'm glad we have some follow-up, so we're going to try to see if we can get some data. See if Richard can be helped specifically. And we heard from Corinne that other places are experiencing this. So maybe between all that, we can figure something out.
Yeah, sounds great. Yeah, of course, you're very welcome.
All right. I'm going to check in again with the Honolulu Fire Department. Okay. As I'm not here, if there's no objections from board members, I'm going to take the agenda out of order and specifically move Mayor Rick Blandiardi's representative, Denise Isari Matsu Bara, up to the top of the agenda. With no objections, please go ahead and give your report.
Aloha and good. Aloha and good evening. Thank you so much, Chair, for accommodating me as I have to go to the airport tonight. So first off, this mayor's highlights from his newsletter. He pleased to report that there's a new department for our lifeguards who patrol, you know, over 200 miles of shoreline. They now have their own department of ocean safety. He all, he also included some highlights about the power safety shut-offs, public safety power shut-offs that have been going on. And I know you're experiencing some, some power outages. And I really want to thank the Police Department and Fire Department for, for dealing with that as it happens. The important thing that I wanted to go through is the concerns that this board raised. And I'm very happy to report that for the red curb repainting that was requested, that DTS will issue a work order to repaint the faded red curbs at the bus stops on the Pensacola Street. So I don't know which board member brought that up, but that is, is that board member? Yeah, so persistent paid off. So that's one item, happy to report. On the second item, the traffic study request, this was for, I think at the April board meeting, a request for the mayor to override. So the, the mayor's office did respond. A traffic study was not required for Chick-fil-A site due to it replacing a similar type of use, which was for Burger King. Because of the existing zoning and conforming use, only a building permit was needed for Chick-fil-A. While recognizing the difference in traffic typically generated between a Burger King and a Chick-fil-A, the potential queuing from the drive-through traffic management plan was required. The traffic management plan is a plan on how traffic will be managed by Chick-fil-A. So when it went to the mayor's office, after he received and understood the facts from the Department of Planning and Permitting, he did want to let them, let you all know that he will not override DPP. DPP has made its decision that it based on Chick-fil-A's meeting ministerial requirements. So the permit that was issued was a ministerial permit, and they can't discriminate. So the same thing when McDonald's came up, this wasn't required. So he did say he is not going to override DPP. Additionally, he does not, as a management policy, excessively manage the day-to-day operations and decisions of any department. So that's his response there. Let's see. On the concerns regarding the existing and upcoming Bill 7 projects, I believe there was a project on 1427 Ernest Street and 1044 Green Street. I want to pass out, and I'm not sure if I have enough copies, but I'm hoping that the board received copies of the response letter from the developer. So on this particular issue, I just want to say, you know, this is a buy right housing program. Bill 7 is buy right housing. The demand for housing is such that, according to the studies, there's 22,000 units needed over the course of the next several years. And it amounted to something like 4,000 units per year. So this program is one of the programs that the city has to help fulfill that, particularly for workforce housing. But your concerns are very important. And the developer, I reached out personally to them, and they acknowledged some of the complaints, the overgrowth in particular. They terminated their existing property manager at the time, and then they replaced them. So that part, they said, is supposed to be getting better. And if it isn't, then let us know because that part, they said, they addressed. Now, the gravel area in question, I know the developer is seeing that it is on city-owned land. So DPP has requested more time to complete their review. They have not been able to verify that yet. So we will hear back from them hopefully next month. But you all have the response now from the developer. And I believe they reached out personally to, I don't know how many of you they talked to. So it sounds like there is some general support and the acknowledgement of the need for more housing. If there are more serious problems, do let us know.
Yeah, just adding right there, it's Vice Chair Nathan Char and myself have been reached out to, just so the board's kind of clued into that. I was going to share at the end of the report, but it seems like it might be helpful to bring it up now.
Thank you. Okay, the next item was concerning the red light camera revenue. So I think this is a question for state DOT. Checks were made with the Hawaii Department of Transportation, and they related that revenues from the red light camera violations go into a special fund, and it's allocated for the red light safety program, which is maintained by the Hawaii State Department of Transportation. So that's where that is at. The other concern that was raised.
Please repeat the name of that fund one more time. I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry. The, the, it's allocated for the red light safety program, which is maintained by Hawaii DOT. That funding is to help expand the program to other locations is what they reported. Okay, the, the next concern involved homeless encampments on Canal Street. So from May 28th to June 11th, District One officers made checks in the area to address the concerns. During the checks, one individual was given a verbal warning for a tent structure, and no other violations were observed during that time. Officers will continue to make checks, offer shelter and assistance, and take appropriate enforcement action when violations occur. So do let us know if this continues. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're going to open up questions first to board members and then to the public. Any questions or comments from board members at this time? Okay, board members can continue to raise questions afterwards, but we're going to start with the public. I'm going to start with Laura. Please go ahead.
Hi, Laura Ruby. I'm actually from Mo'eele'eele, but neighbor, you know. My quick question is really, if you can take this back to the mayor, he once expressed concern that Alawai Boulevard, that's the Waikiki side, was maybe going to be compromised by any bridge planning because it would spill out into that street and it would take away one lane. Well, I was there on Saturday, and it took me 10 to 15 minutes to get from Kapahulu halfway down the street. And that, you can imagine what it would be like if, on any regular day, that even the fire people couldn't get through or whatever. So I just would like you to take it back to the mayor and say that this is a real, real concern with the proposed bridge plan. Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, we do have that agenda, so perfect. No, that's okay. Would you like a chance to respond to that, or should we go straight to Richard? Richard, please go ahead. You can grab a mic. You have special permission.
First of all, thank you, everyone. Because with the concerns we brought up, I'd say, there was some changes that were updated with the grass overlay and, you know, the issues with Ernest Street. So a lot of things, we've seen some improvements, except for the crime and the drugs and everything else. Even like as two days ago, we had a major domestic, five police officers showed up. A lot of things going on with that building itself. But everything else, you know, there is some improvements. Like you said, with the DPP came out, they actually came out and looked at it. The contractor came and cleared out that whole area. But now there's cones there, so it's maybe even more dangerous. But something's, you know, they're doing something. So I appreciate, you know, just having that first portion of being able to start something. But now that gravel's even more of a danger. Since they removed everything, it's just a complete drop. So, and they didn't know what to do either. DPP, because I talked to them and they're like, yeah, we're still trying to figure it out. But thank you so much.
Yeah.
Appreciate everybody to be part of helping us see some kind of growth and improvements and stuff like that. Now we just got to work with the crime and everything else. Thank you.
Can I respond to that? So thank you very much for the recognition. I just wanted to add that the developers also looked into some of the concerns about the tenants. They were not able to substantiate by police reports that it was their tenants involved. So if you see it, or, you know, your neighbors see it, that they, they have to report it. And so, so it can be recorded and that it can be on record because they did look into it and they weren't able to substantiate it. Yeah, so report it. Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. So we have some more homework to do, Richard. Feel free to follow, feel free to follow up with me after the meeting. We can talk more about what we might be able to do. Or of course, to talk to Denise as well here, if you'd like to. I'm going to recognize at this time Lindsey Chambers. Thank you for joining us again.
Thank you so much. And this is to the mayor's representative. You know, we understand we don't want Mayor to micromanage his departments, but I think when there's a safety issue, particularly with Chick-fil-A, we do want some intervention as needed. And I want to be clear that, you know, thank you, Ian and Logan, for sharing the TMP that was approved by the city. But it is a list of recommendations. It is not a plan, and I'm not sure how enforceable it is if it says something along the lines of, you know, increasing kitchen staff without providing a baseline number of what that means to increase it and how enforceable something like this is. And as you'll see on social media, there are videos of emergency vehicles struggling to get through Baritania Street during peak periods. And we need CFA to define what peak periods are in these plans and what would trigger some of these quote recommendations to be implemented. So I don't know if this is the appropriate time to share it, but just my, my ask to the board would be to make a motion to require Chick-fil-A to update their TMP. Now that the location is open, they can create something that specifically addresses the traffic issues in this area with the driveways, with the parked cars on a main street in the city and the, the specific challenges that come from Baritania Street. So thank you. That's, that's my request to the board.
Thank you very much. Denise, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you for voicing that. So DPP's response was that their issuance of the permit, the ministered permit is separate and apart from the TMP that was approved by DTS. So, and then some of those traffic incidences that may have occurred may be a function of where it falls under HPD's jurisdiction. But going back to DPP's jurisdiction on ministerial permits, I think that maintains. So I think that's a good request to work, try to work things out with Chick-fil-A on their management plan.
Thank you very much. So I also wanted to actually raise a question on that. I would like to have a better understanding of what type of agreement this is. So for example, the requested wording, and we have to take Lindsey literally on this. I understand what she's asking us to do was to require, of course, the board doesn't have the authority to require this type of agreement. Can you speak a little bit more on what this agreement, the nature of this agreement is? I assume it's between two parties, and it's something that, like, and we had some questions about the enforceability. Can you just give us a little more context as the board considers potential future action?
So I'm not familiar with the agreement that she's referring to, but if it is an agreement that was between Chick-fil-A and DTS or another department, then it would have to be referred to that department for further review.
Okay. I'm going to follow up with Lindsey after this meeting. It's not currently on the agenda, so it's not actionable at this time in any case. But we can look at potential weighing in on her request later. Do we have any final questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for the report. Thanks for coming before your, your flight this evening and have a safe flight.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm going to check in one last time is the Honolulu Fire Department here. Seeing none, we're going to move on to presentations. I understand we had to change a presenter. But on the presentation today, by popular request, the deputy, a deputy prosecuting attorney is joining us. It was originally on the agenda for Flo Nakakuni. I don't believe she was able to join us. Oh, hello. Thank you so much for making the time to come out this evening.
Hi Chair Ross, how are you?
Doing very well. So to give a little bit of context, there's been a lot of discussions about crime, public safety, racing on tantalous, running of red lights, et cetera, et cetera. And we feel as a board, we've been getting some contradictory or hard to like parse out information about when something's actionable from the prosecutor's office, what types of things police need to write a police report and kind of questions of that nature. So if you can just walk us through those sort of requirements, what you folks are looking at, when you typically decide to bring up charges, that would just be a huge help for our board.
You betcha. First I'll introduce myself. My name is Brooks Baer and I'm not a deputy prosecuting attorney, but I have two of them with me. So I will introduce them, I just wanted to say hello. Thank you very much, Chair Ross and board members. Thank you very much for inviting us, we appreciate it. You know, we're not like border water supply or the police or even the mayor's representative, council members say, who, who, who attend these a lot. And so it's a little unusual for us to be here. We certainly appreciate the opportunity. As you know, we prosecute crimes that occur here on Oahu in Honolulu. The typical process is you observe a crime, you report it to police. If they investigate, they've got a suspect, they think that, that they've got sufficient evidence that we might be able to prosecute. They then refer the crime to the Department of Prosecuting Attorney. One of our deputies will review the case, depending on what kind of crime it is. If it's a felony, it could go to our screening and intake division. If it's a misdemeanor, Flo Nakakuni and her staff would look at it. And then we will charge a crime if we believe that we can prove guilt beyond a reasonable doubt. And that is kind of the catchall. A lot of times people want particulars, but really it always boils down to can we, do we think, are we confident we can prove guilt beyond a reasonable doubt? Because of course it would not be ethical for us to file charges in something that we don't really think we can pursue. So that's who we are. I want to give you my email address in case any questions come up tonight that, you know, anything particular, stats or anything that, you know, about a particular case, you're, you're wondering about that, that Andrew or Flo are not prepared to answer. I'd be happy to answer any emails that you send to me. So if you got your pen in hand or you can watch later online, it's first name Brooks, B R O O K S, dot, last name Baer, B A E H R, at honolulu.gov. And if you send me an email at brooks, B R O O K S, dot Baer, B A E H R, at honolulu.gov, I'd be happy to respond. Before we get to Flo Nakakuni, she heads our misdemeanor prosecution division. She's a very experienced attorney, she was a former US attorney here in Hawaii. But before we get to Flo, I'd like to introduce Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Andrew Itzuno. Andrew is a team captain in the misdemeanor prosecution division and I think he can specifically address some of what you're asking. So thank you.
Good evening, Chair Ian Ross and members of the neighborhood board. It's nice to be at a meeting like this. I used to serve on the Pearl City Neighborhood Board for a few years. But my name is Andrew Itzuno, I'm one of the team, or one of the supervisors of the misdemeanor division and I am here, oh, sorry, and I am here, oh. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Andrew Itzuno and I am one of the supervisors of the misdemeanor division at the prosecutor's office. I understand that there are questions that the board does have, so I will do my very best to answer all of them. One of the questions I did see was how, why can't we prosecute certain offenses or how much evidence do we need? And like Brooks did say, the standard is beyond a reasonable doubt. So we don't charge cases until we have evidence to prove the case beyond a reasonable doubt at trial. Another question that I did see is, okay, there's surveillance video evidence showing a car that is racing. And that is great evidence, but due to the Sixth Amendment and the confrontation clause, we need to have a witness who can testify to what is depicted in the video. So if there's no witness who is going to step forward, like a civilian witness or a police officer, who is going to be able to testify and be cross-examine, uh, cross-examined or testify in court, then we're not going to be able to put on that case and prove it beyond a reasonable doubt. Another issue with cases where we only have surveillance video and no witness or only surveillance video is that we're not able to prove IDs. So for example, even if there is a video showing a car driving recklessly, we have the license plate of the vehicle. If no one can say who the driver was, we don't have any ID. And as people do say, no face, no case, right? ID is an essential element in those types, in all criminal prosecution cases. And we do review every single case that does come into our office. Individually, we look at all of the facts. And at the end of the day, if we are not able to prove a case beyond a reasonable doubt, we simply cannot charge the case. Are there any questions regarding that?
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to take questions from the, the board first and we're going to save questions from the audience to the very end if that's okay. All right, please go ahead, Corinne.
Well, if the police were to actually investigate the case and possibly come up with a witness, which, you know, mostly I think they don't for misdemeanors, but if they were to investigate, would the witness, for example, who owns the surveillance camera be able to authenticate that, you know, to testify that this is their camera and it was pointed in this location at this time? And then, you know, for example, if the police officer chose to drive to the home of the person who, you know, has the vehicle and knock on their door and, you know, talk to their mother and, you know, she, oh yeah, he was driving that day. I mean, could you get some, some circumstantial evidence together if an actual investigation was performed? That would be sufficient, you know, if you started with a tape?
Yeah, thank you, board member Carson, absolutely. So if the officer goes out and does further investigation and a witness does step forward and say, hey, yeah, I can ID the person who was driving the vehicle, I can, I can state in court that the video that I did take is a fair and accurate depiction of what happened on that date, then that is sufficient evidence to prosecute that case. Again, it comes down to every, the facts in every single case. But in a situation like that, yes, we could take that case, charge it and take it to trial. Sorry. Oh, sorry. And then just to follow up, so when police officers are doing investigation, things that really do help is evidence such as surveillance video, but also detailed written statements. So at a lot of, during the investigation of a lot of these cases, the officers will ask the civilian witness, the victim, can you write a written statement? And if those witnesses can write a very detailed written statement, it really does help and it goes a really long way.
Thank you so much. Sorry, I just got a message from someone who's trying to join our chats. I'm going to have to forward that to Logan in a moment. I'm going to recognize a question from Sam Mitchell.
Yeah. What is your standard for fireworks? With the new rules that they're going to allow sparklers and the possibility of sparkler bombs, is there any standard that you have for prosecuting fireworks?
It's the same standard, again, proof beyond a reasonable doubt. And when we're dealing with fireworks, what makes it very difficult is a lot of times we don't know who actually set the fireworks off. So again, it's a very fact-specific case. We look at all of the facts as it comes in. But a case where, you know, you have someone on video lighting the fireworks, setting it off, is very different from one where you hear the firework go off, you go there, you just see a person standing there. You can see the weaknesses and strengths of those cases, but it really is the same standard. And we review every single case the best that we can before making a decision on charging.
Thank you so much. You know, just give more context. I think what we keep hearing is a lot of frustration, people who feel they do have things like this on camera, same sort of folks during the same place, knowing where they live because they ran in that direction and just not seeing much follow-up. Same sort of with, with what's going on in tantalous, with the cars racing up there. I think we're running into a bit of a case where a lot of folks feel like they have that sort of evidence, but they're not being listened to. So a question I want to ask for you is, do you even need, like, if you've prosecuted cases like this before, how does it usually come to you in a way which is actionable for you? I think you've given us a good idea on what criteria is, is required. And what we've been hearing is they have that level, they're meeting that threshold. But what, what's actually prompting the decisions by HPD or your department to follow through after that occurs?
Well, we already have a process in place on how we screen all the cases, whether it's a citation being issued, an arrest where a person bails out or just sort of a penal summons complaint where police go out and investigate and they don't make an arrest, they don't issue a citation, but they send the, the police report to our office just for a review by the prosecutors. If you do have a case and you are wondering what is going to happen with the case, you can give the office a call and I will give you my direct line. It was 768-7417, 768-7417. And that, that's my office line, my office line, right? And we will look into the case and we can give you updates on where the case is in the process. If something is missing or if there's not enough evidence or we have questions, we can ask you. But it really does help if we do get follow-up questions from the people involved in the case. Because sometimes, you know, we deal with about 4,000 cases coming in a month and things can fall through the cracks. So if you do, do give our office a call, I'll, I can personally take a look at it and figure out what's going on with your case.
Thank you so much. I believe we have another presentation from your office, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
All right, I'm sorry for misspeaking earlier, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Flo Nakakuni by saying that you weren't in attendance. I had clearly misread an email, so I apologize for that faux pas.
No problem.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and aloha. So what I want to address is this, one of the questions that we were asked was, all right, in our neighborhood, we see obvious homeless people doing things that look to us, look to you, like maybe criminal activity. They do things that appear to be harassing people, things like that. So I want to tell you that in the misdemeanor division, so this would be cases in state district court. So traffic cases, like the DUI cases and petty misdemeanor and misdemeanor cases, harassment, assault four, things like that. And a large number of our defendants who commit these offenses are homeless individuals. And many of these homeless individuals, based on their conduct, appearance, their language, are obviously presenting with what to most people would look like they have some sort of mental health issue, right? And so I will tell you that our office and HPD work closely together on these kinds of cases. Most, in fact, just about all the cases we do come from them. And both HPD and our office work very closely with the Institute of Human Services or IHS. And so IHS is a local nonprofit and their mission is to work toward ending and preventing homelessness. And I just talked to Connie Mitchell, who is executive director this afternoon to confirm that I could say all these things. So what she's, so I explained what the situation was and she's well aware of the situation in a lot of neighborhoods, right? Those of us who live wherever we live and we see sometimes it's the same individual doing the same thing. And obviously they have mental health issues. And it looks to us like they're homeless and they may be doing things like either talking to themselves, running into the street, into traffic or seem, appearing to harass people, maybe not actually touch them, but yell at them from six feet, six feet away, things like that, right? So she did say that if anybody sees anyone, any individual, individuals in their neighborhood who based on their conduct, appearance, their language, appear to have any mental health issue, to contact the IHS outreach manager. His name, his first name is Castro, as in Castro. And his direct office line, and I've been told to give it to you, is 808-447-2865. If he does not answer, leave your name and phone number and he will return the call within 24 or 48 hours. And he has asked for this specific information so he can follow up. The location, a description of the individual, explain what this person is doing or was doing. If you have pictures of this person, email it to him at castrom, M, so C A S T R O, M as in Mary, at ihshawaii.org. They will come out and, and if you have information such as this person is here every morning from 8:00 AM or at 7:30. Or this person is here at 5:30 in the, whatever it is, the more detailed information, the better. And he said that they will come out to the location and try to talk to these people. They have a mass, a tremendous outreach program. And they have outreach programs, they have a night outreach program because a lot of these individuals are out at night. And of course, many are out at day and those are the folks you probably see most often. But they will come and try to talk to that person. And if there's an MH issue, because sometimes it might be some other issue, but if there's a mental health issue, he will refer that person to one of their IHS mental health teams. So if are you, I would take him up on it. Because that's what they're here to do. They do a lot, they work a lot with homeless individuals and they don't just, some people, I know, I know people who think that, well, they just feed these guys. They do that, but they do more than that. They offer treatment services, they have a program called ACT, Assisted Community Treatment. And that's a program and there's several levels to it. There's, so at the highest level, what they do is they're authorized by law to go to family court, obtain a petition for involuntary medical treatment of a person who appears, who has a serious mental illness with a long-term injection. Short of that, she tells me that there are individuals who agree to this. So IHS has caseworkers who are out there in the community. They do try to build a rapport, a relationship with these folks. They go out continually and it takes a while. It's very few of these people go, you're right, I want treatment. I mean, they don't do that, right? And so these folks from IHS will go out, try to contact these people, establish some sort of rapport. And they have convinced a small number of people to voluntarily take these injections for long-term. I think she told me long-term means maybe a couple of months, but you got to keep taking these injections, right? And so they do a great job. They have a special project in Waikiki because Waikiki, as you know, is a magnet for all kinds of individuals. And they're, it just, you can easily hide, not really hide, but in Waikiki, right? Because there's so many people walking around at all hours of the day, unlike say a neighborhood like such as yours. So please contact these folks, they do want to help. And this is a number, feel free to share with anybody on this island, they work only on this island. And they do want to treat these folks. I mean, they have the capability to do that, they are qualified to do this. And so I put that out there, I have their permission and please do call. The more information they have, when they come out, because if they keep coming out and the person isn't there, well, they're not going to keep coming out, right? But the more information you can give of the specific individual who is at a particular corner every day, then they'll come out at that time and try to talk to that individual and have some kind of interaction with them. So thank you, that is all I have this evening. Do you have any questions?
Yes, we're going to do the board questions then. I'm going to open up to broader from the other attendees as well for all of it. So the, the first person I want to recognize, very sorry, is member Claire Santos. Thank you, Claire, please go ahead.
Hi, pardon my workout outfit here. Thank you so much for this presentation. I'm wondering, are you also engaging with the CORE program, the city's crisis outreach program in addition? Because I know we're with IHS as well, yeah?
Yes. I work mostly, we work mostly with IHS, but I'm very familiar with CORE. And, you know, I, I think CORE, what they say is call us. So you can call them too. We just haven't dealt with CORE that much because CORE, you know, CORE does, they have broadened what they do and you should call them. I just haven't worked directly with them, although, you know, I, I do know what they do and I think what they do is great. But with Connie Mitchell, I guess I've worked with her for a much longer time.
She's the gold standard, yeah.
She is, she's very good.
And Waikiki Health Center has a lot of homeless outreach as well, yeah?
They do.
Or they, yeah, okay. There's a lot of resources, but there's a lot more houseless people and mental illness on the street. Or they, yeah, okay. There's a lot of resources, but there's a lot more houseless people and mental illness on the streets. We're all trying.
Yeah, it's a, you know, it's one of those issues that it's, it's, it's growing, right? Twenty years ago, homeless people weren't that visible in our community. Uh, but now, you know, very visible everywhere in a community. And many of them, you know, I, I'm convinced if you, if you're on the streets for a while, you'll probably develop some sort of, um, mental health issue. Uh, you know, life's rough living on the street.
Yeah, it's not a, not a happy environment. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Santos.
I'm going to rock, recognize John Steelquist. Please go ahead, John.
I got, I got the last two digits.
Okay.
Six eight, six five.
So John was just clarifying the last four digits were?
Sure.
Five, six, eight, five?
It's eight oh eight four four seven two eight six five.
Two eight six five.
Two eight six five is what I said. Perfect. Uh, and if you could also repeat the IHS email, that would also be very helpful.
Oh, the name of the individual, the IHS outreach manager, I just got his first name is Castro.
Castro, great. And an email?
Oh, email, I'm sorry. His email is Castro M, C A S T R O M as in Mary, at I H S dot Hawaii dot org.
Wonderful. Okay. So I'm now going to open it up, uh, if, uh, finish all three of you. So, um, if, as any members of the public who have a question, please direct it who you would like to have answer that question. But I want to open up that up now to all in attendance. Yes, please go ahead, Richard.
We're looking for somebody that we know that's gone homeless. If we give somebody a name, is there, are there privacy issues involved? So what can happen if I give you a name, XXX, have you folks been there?
Yeah, you can give me that. I mean, the more information, the better. All I would do is, for example, I'd actually call Connie Mitchell tomorrow because my understanding of how they operate, I know they keep, they have a, they keep track of their clients. And as you can imagine, some of these clients come and go, right? I mean, it's not like they're, they agree to, I mean, they might agree to, but they may or may not stay for, say for the time necessary for their treatment, right? Um, but Connie knows a lot of names, so I would run the name by her. And I can tell you that I don't quite understand this, but different organizations are responsible for different geographical areas around the, uh, around the island. And, um, I see that council member Calvin says nodding his head. So I don't know Connie's area, but you know, IHS is in, is, is, uh, in the Lower Kalahi, Dillingham, that area. Uh, I'm familiar with agencies on the North Shore, so I don't know where this person would be, but I can get the name from you later. It's, it's not a privacy violation. Um, I probably want to know why you want to know about this particular person. Uh, but all I would do is call Connie, do you know this person? And she may or may not.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're, uh, not seeing any other hands, so I think we're going to close out questions there. I just want to say, I really appreciate this. Uh, thank you all so much for coming out. Thank you to member, uh, Corinne Carson for recommending, oh, actually I see one more hand up, might be Corinne Carson. Uh, but closing out, uh, thank you so much for being here. Corinne, are you recognized at this?
Sorry, I just have one more question and any of the people from the prosecutor's office could answer it. Do, if you have enough evidence in the file to prove that you believe you can ethically prove guilt beyond a reasonable doubt, um, but it seems like it's not worth the trouble because the crime is so small. Um, do you, uh, decline to prosecute or is there any policy regarding that?
No, no. Um, you know, they're crimes and they're crimes, right? I mean, in misdemeanor prosecute, misdemeanor prosecution division, it's misdemeanors and petty misdemeanors. So petty misdemeanors, the maximum possible penalty is six, is, is thirty days in jail. As opposed to a full misdemeanor, up to a year in jail, but no more. Felonies is more than that. So in the big scheme of things, okay, a murder certainly much bigger. It's far more serious and you're going to go to prison. Uh, petty misdemeanor, likely you'll have probation, right? But to us, we don't discriminate that way, you know, uh, we don't say, no, this is just a petty misdemeanor, so we don't care. So a case comes in, we do evaluate every case on its merits.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It was really helpful.
Yeah, very helpful. Thank you all so much for being here with us this evening.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on in the agenda to bus route modifications, Department of Transportation Services.
Hey, thank you. Uh, will I be able to share my screen at this time?
Yes, yes, you're, you're able to do that.
All right. Thank you. Oh. All right. Hi, my name's Eric Grover. I'm with the Department of Transportation Services. Uh, can everyone see the, what's on my screen here, my presentation?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to go over the upcoming bus service changes. Um, they're going to be effective Sunday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Um, and there's a lot of changes coming up, however, um, relative or related to your area, um, there's one in particular that we will spend time looking at and it is the Route Eighteen, University and Alamoana, uh, which is linked to the Route Twenty-four. So this route, uh, starts on Kapuhulu by Safeway, goes by the University of Hawaii and goes on Wilder Avenue. And then it goes down Pensacola to Alamoana Center. And then it turns around and comes back up and does the return on Keamoku, back to its, uh, origin on Kapuhulu near Safeway. So this route is going to be discontinued. However, there are a number of alternative routes, uh, that you could take in the area. Um, here's a list of them and the PowerPoint will be available for everyone to get. But, uh, just a few to think about here is the Route A. So it comes down to UH Manoa from Pro Ridge. Uh, Route Four, New Uanu Downtown, Makiki, UH and Waikiki. We have the Route Five from Manoa Valley to Alamoana. Route Six, that goes between Ooa, Downtown, Alamoana, UH Manoa and Manoa Valley. The Route Eight, Makiki, Alamoana and Waikiki. Route Thirteen, New Uanu Downtown, Alamoana, Waikiki, Kapuhulu and UH Manoa. And the Route One O Two that goes between Makiki and Alamoana. So, uh, there's going to be a number of changes and here's an overview of all the changes, most of which are outside of your neighborhood board area. So we're going to skip over those. Everyone can look over the PowerPoint if they'd like and reach out to me. Um, here's my information here and I'll also leave it in the chat. Email and phone and voicemail. So that's the end of my presentation. Would anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Opening up to the board first. Any questions from board members at this time? Seeing none, opening it up to all participants. No, uh, thank you so much for your presentation and for keeping us informed.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Uh, moving on, we have, uh, Cyrus Howell with us, uh, presenting on free, uh, rainwater assessments from Hawaii Green Growth. Tweet sharing is going to work fine. We just give it a moment. It usually comes through.
Hmm, no.
Do you potentially have multiple windows open? You're only sharing one window?
Possible.
Uh, wait, I think we did plan a backup. Logan, can you prep the presentation that Cyrus emailed you? Looks like it just came up though. Oh, that was for you. Okay. Cool. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. Um, my name is Cyrus Howell. I, uh, am a resident of Makiki. I also work at local nonprofit Hawaii Green Growth as the project lead for what we're calling Follow the Drop and, uh, tagline, building a more resilient watershed, one home at a time. Will hopefully become clear by the end of this presentation. Um, I'll start with the next slide, please, Logan. Just, uh, giving a description about our watershed. Um, these are some of our sponsors, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, uh, and Hawaii Community Foundation and some of our partners along the bottom there, the Department of Facility Maintenance Stormwater Quality Division. We're very grateful, uh, for their partnership. And then Roth Ecological and Three R Water for the technological design engineering aspects of this, uh, green stormwater infrastructure, which is really just a fancy word for rain barrels and rain gardens, rain capture, uh, at a basically residential or small scale level um, across our communities next to IPVs. So these are the, really the desired outcomes of our project. The purpose of this project is to recharge, it's, it's twofold, to recharge our aquifers and to mitigate flooding and brownwater runoff flowing into our nearshore marine habitats via the Alawai Canal um, and our streams, rain gardens, bioswales, rain barrels and other green stormwater infrastructure, as I said, are effective ways of achieving this by keeping rainwater where it falls, rather than allowing it to go down our driveways, into the streets, into the storm drains and then ultimately into the ocean. Next slide, please. So, uh, I found already, just in doing this work, that not everybody is familiar with what a watershed is. So I thought I would just share very briefly, um, this, this picture and then I'll, I'll follow it up. The next slide is actually of the Alawai watershed, uh, but it's basically a series of tributaries down, coming down from the mountain down to, um, the ocean. So, and then it's flanked by ridges. So the next slide, thank you, Logan, uh, shows just how big the whole Alawai watershed is. It's comprised of essentially two subwatersheds, Palolo and Manoa. Um, but it spans all the way from, uh, Punchbowl to Diamond Head, from the Koala ridge tops all the way down to the beach. Uh, there's about two hundred thousand residents in this area and the project that we're doing is open, is, is free to, uh, everyone. These property rainwater assessments. Next slide, please. Uh, and then we also found that not so many people really understand what an aquifer is. Uh, so I just wanted to include this very briefly. Um, many people think it's sort of a, uh, underground natural tank, uh, that, that has water in it. But I think maybe the best way for people to visualize this is to think of the old fashioned wells that, uh, go straight down. And, you know, you might've seen this in person or in popular culture movies. Um, you know, it's kind of stone hole in the ground, lowering a bucket, bringing it up. Uh, it has to be deep enough, obviously, for the groundwater to surface and reach. And so that's, uh, you know, there are wells all across our island to access the water in our aquifers. Uh, we depend a hundred percent on our groundwater for our drinking water. So it's super important, um, until things like desalination and other sources come along, uh, to recharge our aquifers. Next slide, please. The picture on the left really describes the kind of water cycle here that, um, we're, we're trying to change. So on the left, you see the rain hitting the, the impermeable surface that is the rooftop of a house as well as its driveway and even its sidewalk. And it flows down, um, typically unmitigated. Some of it goes into the lawn, sure. Um, and then into the storm drain and then ultimately into the streams and ocean. That picture on the right, uh, shows kind of an alternative path with a couple varieties of GSI illustrated there. There's the rain garden where all the arrows are pointing to, but there's also permeable pavement, um, sort of that crisscross style. Some of you have seen these in our neighborhoods and, uh, at people's houses. Um, that also mitigates runoff coming from driveways specifically. Next slide, please. This is just a list of other types. Um, maybe some people have heard of French drains and other things like that though. So there's, um, drainage systems as well as, uh, you know, infiltration, uh, systems too. Next slide. So just a few pictures of what these green stormwater infrastructure look like in real life, permeable pavement, pretty straightforward. Yeah. And if you've been to the Waikiki Aquarium, they have a very beautiful rain garden here. And just off to the right, outside of the frame of this picture is the, uh, downspout into the, the drainage that feeds this. Um, it's basically a depression with what we call engineered soil, which is a sandy loam mixture that's just essentially better at absorbing water than, um, sometimes the, the naturally occurring clay that used to be there. And it's filled with, um, native plants that are suitable for the environment and moisture zone. So it's, um, good in a variety of ways for our environment. Slide. Uh, another one, some of you may have seen, this one's in Kamuki, just at the, it's, it's relatively new. Um, at the corner of Eleventh and Harding Avenue there. And, uh, this is also filled with, um, native plants. And you can see the, the cutout there, uh, on the border of the, the parking lot that allows the runoff from the parking lot into this, uh, kind of narrow but well-designed rain garden. Next slide, please. Just some pictures of different sized rain barrels to give you an idea of, uh, what's available. Urban Farmer City Mill, many of the other hardware stores, even online retailers sell these, but Urban Farmer in Mapuna Puna sells them for, uh, they, they have up to a thousand, two thousand, uh, gallon tanks for even agricultural scale. Next slide, please. And so I just wanted to describe it, it kind of as I conclude, the process that is these rainwater assessments. So our team of, um, very smart, hardworking interns uses an app called Follow the Drop that was developed by Three R Water to visit a, for example, homeowner's property, go around taking pictures of their downspouts and then drawing a polygon on the section of the roof specifically draining into that downspout. And then also take the average annual rainfall data for that specific area to calculate the average annual, um, in gallons rainfall, that specific downspout experiences. And then that information tells us the best size rain barrel or rain garden, green stormwater infrastructure for that property owner, property manager to consider, um, putting on their property in order to divert runoff and recharge aquifer. Next slide, please. So this is, uh, a kind of a unique opportunity, uh, for any resident, anybody who works in the Alawai watershed to even try out the app on your own. I will confess it, it took me, I'm still learning. It takes a little bit of practice. It's very technical. Um, but that's also why we're offering these free rainwater assessments. So the bar or the QR code pictured up there and I can, uh, share the link also via chat when I sit back down uh, to book an appointment directly with us is there. And then the HGG is the, the code that you need in order to register an account while, um, setting it up, setting up the app on your iPad, iPhone or Android device. Um, so the last bullet point there at the bottom, incentive program. There are a number of small grants, uh, that are becoming available this year as soon as this summer and going into the fall from different local nonprofits, federal funding, uh, to actually install both at the residential and school commercial level, uh, green stormwater projects of varying sizes. So, uh, the way that the, their projects are considered is when you upload via the app, um, the city and county department of facility maintenance sees them and then they, uh, evaluate them for consideration. Next slide, please. And then just to kind of close this out, these are some screenshots of what the app actually looks like. So on the left-hand side is actually my parents' house in St. Louis Heights where they're considering putting in a tank. And, uh, in the middle, that sort of slender, uh, image is what the polygons for that specific downspout pictured left, um, is, is draining from. And then on the right, you see two columns, the green one on the right-hand side is the total runoff. And then the green one alongside it to its left is the, um, potential capture with the optimal size, um, rain barrel. So that's, you can see up there is a hundred thirty-eight gallons up to, you know, however, however many the homeowner wants. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide is really just to emphasize the importance, uh, both, you know, uh, ecologically, but also, um, economically. So, you know, when you're using rain capture to water your plants, especially going into the summer, you can save a lot of money. And next slide. Um, and so with that, I'll just close out my presentation and see if there's any questions. Thank you so much. Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, first question is from Corinne Carson.
Have you had any success with condo buildings, large condo buildings? Um, that are not new construction? Have you convinced anyone? And if so, what arguments did you use to convince them to adopt this technology?
The short answer is no, we haven't had success yet, but we also haven't, um, tried. We haven't conducted an assessment. The short answer is no, we haven't had success yet, but we also haven't tried. We haven't conducted an assessment at any of these condos. I personally live across from Catholic Charities on, you know, across Kamoku from there in an apartment. And for us, there just isn't any suitable area for capturing the roof. And we just repaved our parking lot with traditional asphalt. So for us, it's essentially out of the question, but that's not to say that other, especially aging properties with the, they might have a paving schedule actually for their parking lot. That could be a big opportunity, not only for the permeable pavement, but even for if it's sloped well enough, can put in a trench like with a grate sort of towards the end that directs the runoff into adjacent vegetation. So there are low budget, lower budget ways to achieve this, but at the kind of commercial scale. So if, you know, if you're interested, be more than happy to come out and do an assessment and see the possibilities are.
I'm not on my board and I don't own, so I have no clout, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, well, you know, we are trying to be very sort of accessible and equitable. We know that there are a lot of renters, especially in Makiki. So, you know, with that all said, we'd love to at least try.
I recognize member Chuck Lee.
Oh, yeah, Cyrus. You know those barrels? Okay. They collect a lot of water and how long can they stand without getting stagnant or mosquito buildup?
That's a good question. I honestly, I don't know myself. I know that when we're doing these assessments, one of the questions we ask is, do you experience any flooding on your property? And if so, where? And so for us, we define flooding as anywhere where sort of ponding or stagnant water stays for over something like 32 hours, I think it is, because that's how long it takes for mosquitoes to start growing. I know that with the rain barrels, there are screens and all kinds of, you know, hardware that are designed to prevent the mosquitoes. So really it's more kind of the algae type of stuff that will eventually, especially depending on sun exposure, that will lead to needing to clean it, drain it, and all those types of things. But it's a good question.
And just to clarify again, you said that you can have a test done on your property as far as saturation, what you're saying? The saturation of the the area around your house on, you know, the grass and everything.
Yeah. So in lieu of doing an actual infiltration test, which is digging a foot deep hole and then pouring some water in, timing how long it takes to infiltrate, we use soil composition data and that tells us essentially the same information that will allow us to determine what the most suitable GSI is. Yeah.
Any other in-person questions from our board? Seeing now, I don't see any hands raised online. I'm going to open it up to all attendees. Any other questions or comments at this time? All right. Well, hearing none, thank you so much for your presentation. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you. Flyers on the table on your way out. Thanks, everyone.
Excellent. Okay, we're going to move on to board business. The first item on the agenda is a chair's report. So I just want to start by saying what an honor it is to be a chair of such a fantastic neighborhood board. When I look at you, I definitely see a board of leaders and I appreciate all the unique talents, skills, assets, knowledge, and everything that you all bring. I want you to know, and I hope you all do know, I take you seriously. I take this board seriously. I take what we do here very seriously. I joined seven years ago. I was working at the legislature as my first time as an aide there. People like, you should, you know, go for this neighborhood board thing, you know, you might be able to help out the public a bit. And I thought, you know, you know, go spend like one day a month, do sort of meetings. And I think as all of us have come to learn, it's more than that. It's sort of creeps into more assets of your life. People know you're on the board and they start asking you to bring things up. And you all gave me the honor of electing me chair five years ago. I think our board has done a good job of being proactive, of following up and of being, as our friend Tom Heinrich likes to highlight, a place for informed community discussion. We're in the media these days. We have joint meetings with boards across the island. Members of Congress attend and report to our board meetings sometimes. We've weighed in on weighty issues like Red Hill. We helped save a post office one time. You folks all remember that? So I think that we've done a lot of really interesting things together. And I recently looked at the little piece of literature I brought to this board of what my promises were as chair. And I promised three things at that time. I promised we would move to being hybrid. I promised we would reactivate the library space and I promised we would designate a potential dog park. I also said something I'd like to try to do, which was make our meetings run on time. And I'll admit I failed on that one. I think we're all failing together on that one though, let me say. And I think three out of four, and I didn't make that one a promise luckily, isn't too bad. And, you know, I tried to leap on these things immediately. But then a once in a lifetime pandemic happened and we became really reactive and figuring out what our role was doing that. I think we did a good job. We endorsed vaccine clinics, especially for immigrant populations of those translators. And I think we did a lot of good. And looking back over those goals, I realized just recently, the last few meetings, I have kept all the promises I had set out to do as chair. And I feel pretty good about that if I'm being honest. And and I really also during this time, since I joined the board, I found so many opportunities to be of service to our community and I've really grown a lot. And that opportunity to grow and to find new ways of serving is something I want for all of us here. And that's why after some discussions, some thinking, and as many of you might know, I elected not to run for reelection as board chair next month for the July meeting. I think it's a really good opportunity for people with new ideas to potentially step up. And I'm not talking just about chair. Whenever things like this open up, usually a lot of the officer positions move around. And I think this is a really good time for us all to reflect on what we might want the next five years of what we do for the public to look like. And, you know, I really set out with those three promises to do in one year. And again, a once in a generation pandemic occurred. A lot of things take a lot longer than you'd expect. But if I were to leave us with a sense of feeling, what I think that we should feel when we come here, despite all the evidence to contrary, is a sense of optimism. Because I believe that as leaders, we have a moral obligation to be optimistic about what is achievable in our communities. We also have an obligation to look at all the really hard data and all of the, you know, and see how hard it's going to be. Doesn't even be optimistic all the time. But if I want to leave everyone in my chair report with an idea, it's that you're all leaders and that I think we have an obligation to be optimistic about what we do for the public. So this is my last neighborhood board chair report. And thank you once again for the, pardon me. Thank you once again for this opportunity and this honor. Aloha.
Chair Ross?
Yes.
So are you still going to be on the board?
Yeah, yeah, I intend to be serving on the board.
Okay.
Some of you know, I have some activities that would require me to leave the board potentially in the future. But I intend to continue to serve as long as I can.
Yeah, thank you very much. You've done an excellent job as our board.
That's very kind of you. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to move on to motion to support opposed proposed sale of the Peikoi Mini Park. We have taken a position. I don't believe there's an update. Oh, wait, I see a hand raised from council member Calvin saying, we might have an update here. Yes, please.
I'll be very brief, but if you want me to read the letter of the owner of the property, I would love to state it for the record. Okay, how's that Corinne? Okay, here we go.
Before we sign up for a letter from them, can you give us a page count?
Page count, one, two.
Oh, I think we could do two. We could do two. Thank you.
This is to Mr. Andy Kuanu, Director of Budget and Finance, City County, Honolulu, from Miss Root Chang, RV Ventures Limited. In regards to the Peikoi Mini Park. There, Mr. Kuanu, thank you very much for your follow-up call regarding the Peikoi Mini Park sale. I was in the process of completing and mailing in the quitclaim deed instructions when Ms. Nami Hira informed us that further clarification regarding the use of the property was needed prior to anything moving forward. Our plan for the mini park is simple. We secure the area for the use of the residents at 1419 Peikoi and also the adjoining 1421 Peikoi, which is also owned by RV Ventures. And thereby create a safer environment for the entire community by eliminating what is now a haven for illegal activities and occupation and uncontrolled feral chicken population. We do not, excuse me, we do not plan to change the topography of the lot, example, remove the big tree and will add a fence around the perimeter to improve and beautify the landscaping. When the city approached us regarding the disposal of Mini Park 14 years ago, letter dated November 13, 2009, we responded with an interest in purchasing the park and has been following up with the city through the years. While the illegal activities kept getting worse, the police has been called many times and our residents have been subjected to very stressful situations, including trespassing, people urinating and defecating and bathing and sleeping on our property and coming onto the property with a knife. The city has made very little effort to make this park for the community. The trees and weeds were often not trimmed, rubbish left by the homeless, unattended, and feral chickens roaming all over. These problems will continue to get worse. So purchasing the property and investing our time and resources is the only way we see to improve the situation. So we strongly feel that this is the right time. But if the seal does not proceed, the budget committee or the governing body should also be required to issue a statement, that's the city council, about what firm commitments will be made on their end, clearly outlining a plan and timeline to the community and neighborhood board. The current situation cannot persist. I look forward to hearing from you, Mr. Kuanu, and let me know if you have any further questions. Thank you. Yours truly, Ms. Root Chang, RV Ventures. So I'll give this to you.
Thank you so much. That's very helpful context. I really appreciate that, council member. Excellent. All right. So as I mentioned, we currently have a standing kind of not really fully articulated opposition. And that means that as chair, I would submit testimony and opposition, just listing the sort of things that were discussed in the meeting without an official position. We're now, we would be able to recognize motions and we could also have discussion at this time.
Chair Ross?
Yes.
So I'm trying to understand. So this is like RV Ventures, they're out of the goodness of their hearts, they're going to purchase this park from the city and take care of it and not change the character of it. It's going to be a a park of some kind, which is going to be better maintained. Yeah, so it's, it'll be for the res, oh, okay.
Only for the residents.
Sure.
Oh, okay. So there, it'll become a part of that. It'll be owned by those, yeah, so it's not going to be a public park anymore.
I think that's something I wasn't fully clear on myself. So if, since I'm unable to answer that, I'm going to take a moment to read. I'm going to recognize member Clara Santos to speak.
Thank you, Chair. It does seem like it's going to become a private park. I've walked past there many, many, many times and never seen a problem until yesterday. And today there's somebody sleeping under a tarp there with their big dog. So I can see where it's upsetting to the neighborhood. But it does sound, you can go ahead and read the document, but it sounds like they want to take it from public to private. So I don't know what will happen with the beakie stand there and how they plan to pursue this, what kind of fence they're going to be putting up, et cetera. Oh, I want to add something, Chair Ross. About your situation, I'm grateful to have served on the board under your leadership and I'm hopeful that whoever takes over as chair, you will be mentoring and supporting.
Thank you very much, Clara, for those kind words. They're heartfelt and appreciated. And you have my firm commitment on that. I remember the day I won chair, former Chair Steelquist pulled me aside and set up a time for us to meet at Shoreshot, a place I miss dearly, to hand over some business. And I intend to treat it with as much seriousness. They'd also have the mentorship again of John Steelquist. So we'd have two chairs helping them potentially, unless John Steelquist is our next chair too. All right. I, reading over this letter, cannot make heads or tails of what Claire or Richard have said. I'm just going to be, you know, clear on that one. So I cannot give a further clarification, but I'm going to recognize Sam Mitchell at this time.
Yeah, I don't like the idea of the landowner buying up a park belongs to the city and then just basically say, I'm going to put a fence around it and take care of the problem. Personally, I think that's a bad precedent. And I wouldn't I wouldn't vote for allowing that to happen. If they were going to build something like a housing or something like that, I could see that. But basically put a fence around it. To me, that's, that's a waste of property.
I'm going to recognize member Chuck Lee.
Um, I live in that area and I could be wrong, but every time I pass that area, there's hardly anybody in it. There's hardly anybody in it, but when there is somebody in it, it's always people that are not really good for the park. So that's my opinion.
I'm just going to weigh in briefly. Some of the arguments we'd heard last time made a full discussion was about finding adequate uses for the park. One offer we still have outstanding is adoption of the park from the Makiki community garden. And I think that's a worthwhile potential offer so far. There's limitations on the likelihood of that becoming a community garden due to the lack of parking and the need to bring materials. But there is that offer. The other subject that was highlighted was of course the temperature. So the maintenance of a green space and a tree still have a broader utility on lowering the temperature. I'm not weighing in one way or the other. I'm just trying to repeat some of the discussion we had last time. Oh, yes, please go ahead.
I would just like to say that I'm always in favor of green space and you might contact Roxanne Adams, who's the executive director of Urban Forestry. And, you know, trees, 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 lower the temperature, green space is always appreciated. Once you turn it over to a private entity, you don't know what's going to happen. I just want to keep green space.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I'm not hearing any motions. I think we got some interesting updates. I think I certainly appreciate the update from the prospective purchaser. So maybe we should move on in the agenda if there's no objection to that. We currently wouldn't be leaving at a broad standing opposition if we do. Okay, we're going to move on then. A letter opposing the disbanding of the Red Hill Community Representation Initiative. So as many people may have heard in the news, there is a new agreement moving forward between the EPA and the military about disbanding the Community Representation Initiative. One of the reasons I put this on the agenda is we've had for a number of meetings now under a consideration of pointing a member to represent our board when attending these meetings. They wouldn't be on that on the initiative itself. They'd be attending the meeting representing our neighborhood board. So I wanted to bring this up. We could, for example, make a motion to draft and send a letter that just generally opposes, because as the wording right now, it would say opposing. But we don't have a language in front of us. There's a lot of community groups currently trying to draft that language, but I would entertain a motion at this time.
Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we oppose the disbanding of that, that committee.
Via a letter or?
Oh, I just want to start the conversation. What's the easiest, quickest way to do this?
Fair enough. That is the easiest way to do this. Okay, do we have a second? All right, we got John Silk with seconding. Let's start the discussion.
Uh, yeah, so basically I, you know, that our board oppose disbanding this Red Hill Committee. Been reading some in the paper about it. So the, what the federal government entity wants to disband it. The people on the committee don't want to disband it. They say they want to keep, you know, their ability to have some kind of a input into this whole process. So that's basically it. Yeah.
There we go. Do we have any further discussion? Please go ahead.
I mean, I just have a question. What is the rationale for disbanding?
Would anyone like to speak to that? I can do my best recollection if not.
They didn't get along.
All right. Claire said they didn't get along. There's been some discussion questioning the efficacy of this community group. That's essentially Bennett.
They themselves wanted to spend.
No, the the military is trying to move forward with a new agreement with the EPA, which would no longer permit its its existence, I suppose, as an official entity representing the public interest in the dismantling of Red Hill.
Chair Ross?
You're recognized.
What was the alternative? I think you just alluded to it. If they disband this community group because they can't agree on terms of communication and such, what was the alternative proposed by the EPA and the Navy? Was it just going to be them?
My understanding is there's a broad range of agreements between the Navy and the EPA for what cleanup and dismantling looks like. Under the current agreement, it requires this initiative and in the new agreement, it's note would no longer include it. So there's probably a broad number of technical changes, I would imagine, in addition to this. But they're essentially moving forward with signing it and replacing the current agreement, which has this organization with one that does not.
Okay, so they're getting rid of community involvement. That's the critical factor for me. That's not acceptable. Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Very welcome. Okay, so we've had a bit of discussion. I want to make sure anyone else in attendance in the public who might want to weigh in has an opportunity to. Sorry, I want to recognize Sam. Go ahead, Sam.
As somebody that's dealt with the military for 38 years, they do this all the time. This is really common. So what I suggest that you do is you tell them, if you're going to dismantle the board, you better start a neighborhood board in that district to represent the people that live there. As you know, Hickam and Pearl Harbor do not have a neighborhood board. They do not have a way to bring up issues. So if they're going to come out and say, well, we want somebody else, they better come out with a better, you know, some way to do that. If not, they should keep what they got.
All right. Thank you very much. So right now we just have a motion to oppose. We could change this to be a motion to have a letter or a resolution or something along those lines. Or we I could call the vote and we would at least have an official statement I can transmit on a letter saying that we voted on this date. So do I hear any motions to amend or shall I call the question? Okay, I'm going to call the question. I'm going to seek unanimous consent on this one. That means any board member in opposition or wishing to abstain should speak up, otherwise the post, the motion will pass all in favor. Is anyone looking to abstain or withhold their vote? Oh, sorry, or vote no? Hearing none, the motion passes. We're going to move on then. Resolution requesting Department of Planning and Permitting to cooperate with other departments on illegal game room inspection and enforcement. Would you mind sharing your screen, Logan? So we do have a resolution on this. I have an update that is, I just feel really good about being able to give this update. So originally, if you looked at it just a few days ago, you would have seen this had all to do with three legal game rooms, just a couple of blocks from our neighborhood board boundaries and that were raided. And it was calling for specifically some of the optional action that can be taken that would have been strengthened by Bill 5758, which our board supports. And that would allow DPP to be coming in with police, you know, with them to find the landowners and the renters for certain building code violations. The really good news is it looks like this has happened in these three sites. They actually moved relatively smoothly and they were able to incorporate this. So I changed out that language and this is just broadly saying, wow, you know, that was really great. Let's do that every time. To add some more context, again, you know, these types of fines and the reasons for going after these ways. There's a general belief that this is more likely to mean the illegal game rooms stay closed down due to the rather hefty fees that DPP can leverage against the landowners. So resolution is pretty simple in that way. Can we just go to the final whereas? So be resolved. So basically the board requests that the various departments cooperate to investigate violators, pursue necessary enforcement action, if necessary, pursue legal action following raids of illegal game rooms. So it's pretty simple on that one. I don't specifically say that they did do it because I'm still gaining the context, but I did hear from a reliable source that it happened in this case. So I have made this more general. I just want to open this up for discussion, motions, et cetera. Nathan, you're recognized at this time.
Sorry. Motion to.
It's working. You don't need press minutes.
Dead. Motion to accept the or adopt the resolution.
Do we have a second? Okay, Member Nakamoto. Member Nakamoto, thank you so much. And with friendly amendments is what he said. We got that on on mic. Okay, great. We're going to go into discussion on this. Yes, please go ahead, Richard.
Ross, I, this may be a point of order, but when you call for if anybody's going to vote no or abstain, could you count three elephants slowly?
Okay, I thought I had three elephants there, but I will. I will do it for you.
It was like boom. And then before anybody could, you know, I wasn't going to abstain or not vote, but
Okay.
There are times when I would like a couple of seconds.
I'll give more time in the future. Thank you so much for that, Richard. I appreciate it. Just go ahead, Member Lee.
Um, yes, just to clarify, is there any responsibility of the landowner or the property owner of the game room to be liable for that kind of action and be penalized?
They can be, yes. So there's there's certain types of laws that would apply more to tenants or the landowner. So some of the most common violations, I think we have it up here. So I think if you scroll up a little bit, we have some really good examples. Really common ones are fire code violations, electric code violations, liquor law violations and more. And so these are some of the ones that are most likely. And the reason why this could potentially be very helpful is it can be somewhat difficult times to approve the operations of illegal game rooms. There's often really giant changes that happen to the site. So they'll add like giant doors and safes and things like that that block escape in case of fire. You know, you can imagine the doors are locked on the on the inside or from the outside at some of these locations for for reasons you might be able to imagine. And, you know, right now, as I recently heard from HPD, at the most recent rates, I heard there were only two arrests and those were for outstanding warrants. So the level of response does not seem to be commiserate with one, the types of violations that are occurring and two, what would actually shut these locations down. One of the things I find especially frustrating is some of these places get raided and they reopen the exact same place right afterwards. So we're just basically asking a DPP to work with HPD to add some teeth to this. And in this case, we would not be having to add any additional laws like we previously support and continue to support with Bill 5758. Hope that answers all your questions. Okay, I'm going to call the question and the question will be seeking unanimous consent. Anyone abstaining or opposing should speak up. All right, hearing none, we have a resolution. All right. Okay, so now we have a motion to consider adding a future agenda item. And we've talked about this last month, a resolution to request a full environmental impact statement for the proposed bridge over the Alawak Canal, University Avenue and Kala Imoku Street residential neighborhood sites. I should have zoomed in. And essentially, I know we were joined by Laura Ruby today, who's been very gracious to attend many neighborhood board meetings on her time to discuss this issue. Please take it away.
Logan, could you put up the resolution, please? I'm sorry, I don't have enough paper ones for everybody. My computer didn't connect with the internet today. And do I have two minutes or three minutes?
I can. We can provide three minutes.
Okay, okay. First of all, already the this is what you may or may not have heard of. It's a proposed conduit from Waikiki to the Mauna'aka side of the Alawak Canal. Okay, they on either side, it's residential, residential on our Mauna'aka side for about a mile. And the other is goes a couple of blocks in residence also. They, the planners who may not really be too familiar with the areas, because what they plan are outlandishly large monster bridge. But what they don't realize is that they're touting that it will be 1,000 to 4,000 strangers crossing over the bridge every day. We have a green belt that goes all the way from the golf course all the way up to McCully Street. And that wants to say a green belt. That's why it's called zero build. That's one of the resolutions. It's never been or the statutes, I'm not sure what it is that are on on this that has not been addressed. Well, you can't, you can't just violate something that's zero build. That means grass area, very nice ground keeping and so forth. And something that is a tower that is was 180 feet. Now, oh, they've lowered it to 170 feet. That's, you know, you're talking about many, many stories up of something that's a very small crossover. Unlike, let's say, a river, a bridge going across the Hudson River or something and somewhere on the mainland, a giant bridge. It's a very small crossing. Please think of Kalakaua Bridge, if you're thinking of any bridge at all, that blends in with the neighborhood and doesn't in any way interfere with anything. The other things that are not, I'll tell you what a full EIS is. It's a document. It's an analytical document and the main phrase you want to come away with is called human environment. Now, that of course means the green space, but what it means is the historical, the social, the cultural, all of the aspects in which humans interact with any space. And those have not been addressed. They're going to try to address them in the 28th of for the the historical one. I have certain opinions on what's going to happen there and they won't be sharing any of the documents until after the presentation. Now, I think that's a fault of a democratic institution, that you should always share everything and have people fully informed. And I think that's the better way to go. So that that is the nugget of it. Okay, we have had almost 700 petition people signing petitions that either don't want a bridge at all or maybe if it had to be something very modest and small in nature. Okay, and so some of the other aspects is we have the migratory bird act. And I think you probably have kolaos here. You might have white terns, manoa koo. And they are going to be impacted.
Worried about time. Would you mind summarizing your remarks and what action you might like the board to consider?
Like is simply for a full EIS to be enacted before any further planning goes on in this bridge. This this will give the community and we want the community response. We want a community interaction, a full document that will actually explain all of these things and how it will fit in with the community. Can they do something that's a proposal that's changes things? Well, sure, that that might be the outcome of what they do. It'd be really nice if they had planners and developers that actually lived in the community or had been here in Hawaii for any less of time. There's a lot of rotating people that go through and they're not necessarily, you know, akamai with what's going on anywhere. So I would really like your support to bring it to the board next time and have them support it. Makiki, I mean, I'm sorry, Manoa did. They had friendly amendments, just little changes of words here and there, and that was fine. And the Diamond Head Board also approved. Thank you very much. Questions?
Thank you so much. Yes, I want to open up for questions from any of our board members. Yes, you're recognized, Richard.
So why do they want to put this bridge up? What are what are the positive points of this bridge? It can't all be negative. What are the positive points of this bridge?
Well, you look first for what is what is necessary and what is urgent. And everyone that we polled in our larger community said fix the McCully Bridge. You know, if you've ever gone over it, you know how restrictive it is and how whatever it is. So the positive things is they think it will turn people into bicycle riders and transport people across. Of course, our park, like your park, is closed at 10 o'clock at night. Well, that ends anybody gallivanting into Waikiki for the evening or something and coming back and overloading. Our parking lot is already full with all of the community groups. The Pacific Islanders especially use it all the time. It's wonderful to hear them singing and everything. And we have the community gardens, large community gardens and everything else, all of those of which are full users of the park. So so I would like to think that there's something positive about.
I'm going to reopen it to more questions. Sorry to cut you off. We will give you more opportunities to speak. Do we have any other board questions? I'm not seeing any online either. I'm going to open it up to to all attendees. Oh, please go ahead, John.
I don't see what kind of benefit we're going to get. The Alawak Canal does a good job of being the Alawak Canal. We don't need a bridge in the middle of the canal.
I recognize Member Carson.
I disagree. I think that there's a huge lack of north-south thoroughways that are accessible to bicyclists and pedestrians. But I will say she's here to ask us if we can put it on the agenda next meeting.
Yes.
And if even though I will be voting against it, I'm almost certain I would support allowing her to bring it to the agenda and I would make a motion to do that.
Okay, we have a motion before us. Do we have a second? All right, Nathan, there's a second. We're going to open up to discussion right into the agenda. At this point, I'm just going to give some some context here. So I felt like I was caught in a slightly awkward position as Chair was on the agenda last time. There was pretty lack of interest from the board. Then at the McCully Moe Lee Neighborhood Board, I promised them I will put this on the agenda if you pass it. They did not pass it and I then felt kind of in a bit of a bind. So talking with Laura, we and Logan, I tried to work out this arrangement in this case to see if it's something we wanted to continue discussion on. So that's the full context. Just wanted to provide that at this time.
And just that the Moili Li McCully Board had had no quorum the first time. The second time, there were a number of people missing that had already supported it. So that's it's just a matter of numbers.
Thank you very much. I mean, we're familiar with that at this board too. Okay. So with that, we have that. I'm just going to seek unanimous consent for adding this to the agenda. Is anyone abstaining or, oh, we got, sorry, Sam, I'll recognize you at this time.
Yeah, um, I too think there should be a bridge. I don't like the bridge that they're they're suggesting. It's way too big. There is a need. It's been discussed for years. I've actually written articles about it. There's been in the paper about needing a bridge. So if they, I would support it. But like I said, it's way too big for what is needed.
Thank you, Sam. So returning to calling the question seeking unanimous consent for adding this to the next agenda. Is anyone abstaining or opposed? All right. Well, I'm seeking unanimous consent. So the motion passes. We'll be picking this up again in July. Thank you so much, Laura Ruby, for being such an expert on this and presenting this evening. All right, it's at about 7:49 PM and we're going to try to get towards the rest of the items. I want to seek if everyone's indulgences, we might consider skipping items F, G and H and putting it off for a bit later. That's the three absence letter, motion to establish new committees and approval of regular meeting minutes. If there's no opposition to that, I'd like us to move forward for the official meeting reports. Nathan, you're recognized.
I think we can approve our regular meeting minutes really quickly.
Okay, so there is some opposition to that, so I'm not going to jump through those items. I'm going to do something, attempt now once more to skip items F and G and go towards the towards approval of regular meeting minutes. Does anyone oppose to that? Hearing none, we're going to move to approval of regular meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Great. Do we have a second? Excellent. All right. Any discussion or any amendments needed? A second was Steelquist. Yes, you're recognized Steelquist. No, okay. All right. If there's no discussion, I'm going to call the question, seek unanimous consent for approving our meeting minutes. If anyone's opposed or abstaining, now is the time to speak up. All right, we have our minutes. Nathan, you were quite right. We're going to move on to City and County of Honolulu Elected Official Monthly Reports. We're going to start with Councilmember Calvin Say. Thank you for being here this evening. Thank you for being an active participant.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. First and foremost, in my monthly newsletter that I just sent out, you folks have it in the chat. This is number one. The web, there's also a website for links in regards for those who are interested in the Alawak Water Shield flood control project, the U.S. Corps of Engineers Honolulu District Civil Works Projects, the Complete Streets Annual Report, if you folks are interested, is in the link. The Homeowners Handbook to Prepare for Natural Disasters. And finally, the Feral Chicken Flyer, which is also part of it. For our long-term projects that we have been trying to address and we have is first and foremost, the gaming room issue. foremost, the gaming room issue. Chair Ross, we are trying to address that. The Chick-fil-A traffic that was discussed earlier, the Ma'keke Community Gardens homeless break-ins, the Cyrus folks that did the presentation, and we did put in some resources for that. For Hugh folks and the others, the racing on Tanlis Ma'keke Heights Drive, HPD is aware of it. For the illegal dumping on Ma'keke Heights Drive, we are also aware of it. And we're trying our best to resolve the jurisdictional issue between whose property is it that a resident like us consider having a berm so that cars cannot park on the side of the street. Then the Ma'keke skate park lights, that's, that's an issue that I think we all know is not city and county land, it's state land, because it's under the freeway. Update on 1421 Pensacola, the city now has gained possession, so we are moving forward. PE Coy Street Mini Park, I believe we talked about it earlier, I sent you the letter, the correspondence. And finally, you folks are all aware that 1111 PE Coy Street Development, that was a presentation by Mr. Phong and his group. Other issues that was brought up, weekly concerns, rehabilitation and enhancement to parking information on Kiwalos Street in Ma'keke to improve the safety, we did make a request. Mr. Brian, I won't mention his last name, the homeless in Ma'keke once more. For those of you who drive down Ward Avenue before you hit Bertania, this is the Ward Avenue contraflow coating is dependent on the Kapilani Boulevard contraflow. The Department of Design and Construction currently has a paving project, rehabilitation of Streets Unit 89A along Kapilani Boulevard, where the contraflow was suspended due to construction activities. Therefore, the contraflow on Ward Avenue also has to be suspended. Contraflow coating is expected to resume in October of 2024 when all the roadwork is completed. Then we have 1123 Kailo Street, Ma'keke, DPP notice of violation concerns. So that was addressed with the inspector and witnessed two vehicles driving down a bike lane on Pensacola, where a bike was parked. So we got the HPD to follow up on that also. At this point in time, I would happy to ask any questions. For the last meeting, Nathan, we had four issues that you wanted to address, right? Dealing with the parks. And that was the maintenance of payment for tennis courts at Ma'keke Tennis Court. That's the two that we sent out, pickleball courts, and finally, the lights at the skateboard. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you folks may have.
The first question comes from Sam Mitchell.
Okay.
Calvin.
Yes, Sam?
I'm concerned about the proposed sparkler initiative. And the reason why, and we've been talking a lot of the thought on next door, is it's very easy to make bombs out of sparklers. And not only that, it's also the number one reason why kids get injured and starts fires. That's the reason why they banned sparklers 10 years ago. So have you talked to the fire department about your proposed sparkler ban? I think it's a bad idea. Where are they right now? What's happened?
We have passed the measure two readings now. It's gonna go to the final full council. The Department of Fire, the Fire Department has testified in opposition. But if you looked at the editorial that was written by the Star Advertiser, that was in the back pages, highlighting that it is not sparklers or fountains that contribute to what we have today as far as the events that you see and experience. The smoke, et cetera, no. But the other point, too, was the fact that it did bring up the question of, it would be much more easier for our local residents to get these type of consumer fireworks rather than going through the black market. And if you want to buy fireworks, which is firecrackers, that is legal, you can go to the retailers. But the point of the matter is that everybody's going through the black market, which has contributed to more of the issues that you see on the eve of New Year's, et cetera. But HFD have testified in opposition.
Thank you so much. Any other questions from board members at this time? Please go ahead.
Yeah, go right ahead, Hugh.
Yep, thank you. Thank you so much for your attention on the illegal dumping.
Yes.
On a related matter, I've noticed that there is a.
It's on.
Yep, I've noticed that there's a, there are homeless people who are creating a encampment in the caves on the side of Ma'keke Heights Drive before the nature center. And I've noticed, notified police. I've also, you know, notified through the 311 app. But I also got a rather lengthy email from, I think, HPD, talking about the ACLU lawsuit, et cetera. And so I understand that there's complexities involved. But I think with regard to the caves, that's, it's dangerous for the people who are living there as well. And so I think something should be done.
Yeah. Now, Hugh, I truly believe we have tried our very best earlier year at the presentation by our prosecutors, that most of it is just a misdemeanor. And I wanted to ask a question to Ms. Nakakuni and Mr. Masuro. What happens if that particular individual becomes a repeat offense? Does it lift the severity of the penalty? Or will it be at the misdemeanor category? See, that is dealing with the, I would say, what criminal side of the laws that we have on the books, the Hawaii revised statute. And that's because of the civil rights issue. And yeah, I can't say much until we see where we, the city stands in regards to pending lawsuit with the ACLU. But Hugh, for the past four years, I think the board members who have known me and seen me, I, I, I'm trying my best to address the homeless issue. We all are. So like, you know, PE Coy Mini Park, right across the street, you get the guys asking for money. You're at that intersection, sitting there like, sitting down on their beach chairs, talking stories, doing deals. And we're trying our best. Like I shared with all of you, from the district I come from, the Crane Park in Kaimeki, to Stadium Park, to Moili Park, to Alaui Park, to Alaui Promenade, the Cartwright Park, to Ma'keke Park, you name it, District 5 has the most homeless encampments. And what can we do, I think, for the city? We're doing our best along with the state, two of our city projects. Have you folks heard of Honu, which was organized by the Honolulu Police Department with the University of Hawaii Medical School, and now the Crisis Outreach Corps? So we are trying to address it. But at the end of the day, everyone is saying we have to have facilities for these individuals. The other concern I bring up at the council meetings, Chair Ross, is the fact that, do we have the services? You may have the building for that homeless patient, but do we have the services? The social services. So like Castro, I met Castro before with IHS. He helped me in Manoa, where there was a homeless person that was sleeping in the streams. And that person was yelling every night, and the residents were upset. But he would go out there to address that issue. But the person is dead there. You can't stop him from that. So I can understand, Hugh, we can try our best. If the caves are on state property, maybe DLNR can go back into looking into it. If it's private property, it's very difficult. Okay?
Thank you so much. I think I might have to cut questions there. We have about 15 minutes or want to leave. But I really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
And for the Q and A. I'm really sorry, we got 15 minutes, so we're gonna have to leave the room. Oh, I'm so sorry. Can we, is there something that can be taken off offline?
Yeah, Richard. Okay, that's the PE Coy Mini Park. Because we did visit it one time when we walked around.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, okay, yeah. I'll get Corporation Council to give me a status report. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. We're gonna move on to council member Tyler DeSantis. Tam is Robin with us?
Yes, hi, everyone. Good evening. So just, just to keep it brief, we've been working with Representatives Takanauchi and Biladi's office, as well as Senator Fukunaga's office. We're planning on organizing a little fire ant meeting, just focused on the impact identification, prevention, and eradication of the little fire ants. I know that's been brought to the attention with the Punahou Carnival and everything. And we've been getting several calls on, kind of, close attention on the issue. So we're aiming for September, we're not sure right now, on the venue. But I wanted to update the board around that. And then I want to appreciate and thank the board for their support, for your support on Bill 57, Bill 58, and the res that you guys just recently passed encouraging DPP to collaborate with other departments. And as always, our newsletter is in the chat.
Thank you so much. Wow, 45 seconds, very impressive. I'm gonna see if we have any questions from board members or the public. Hearing none, Robin, thank you so much. Always good to work with you. I think we'll look forward to talking to you again next month. Now, we're gonna move on to state elected official reports, starting with Representative Della Albaladi.
Good evening, Chair Ross. Is Representative Biladi there at the facility?
She is not, no.
Okay, if I may, just a few words also to try to match Robin. First, as a matter of disclosure, Representative Biladi is a candidate for reelection to the House of Representatives. And what was a surprise is that she is uncontested. So her name will appear only on the August 10 primary election ballot. So as an uncontested candidate, basically, she needs one official vote at that time, and her name will not appear on the general election ballot on November 5. So just a matter of disclosure there for being a candidate and as well being uncontested and to expect it then to return to the House of Representatives for District 26. Secondly, something else that we're paying attention to is that June 25 is the deadline for the governor to communicate any potential vetoes to the legislature. If the governor does not include a bill on that list, then he cannot veto that measure. If he puts it on the list, he doesn't have to veto it. But he still has until the ultimate deadline of July 10, in order to sign a measure into law, allow it to become law without a signature, or veto the bill. And then lastly, it seems a little quieter at the moment. We're doing a lot of cleanup and getting caught up on projects. But this is a good time that if you have ideas for potential legislation or other concerns to be addressed, ideas for capital improvement projects or whatever, then now's a good time to communicate that to any of your elected officials. Okay, thank you, Chair Ross.
Thank you very much, Tom. Very much appreciate. I now actually have to give any other candidate for elected office an opportunity to announce their candidacy at this time. So if anyone who hasn't previously announced their candidacy, they are now free to. All right, hearing none, seeing as I already announced a previous meeting, I'm gonna go back to questions and comments to Tom Heinrich and Representative Della Albaladi's office. Seeing none, Tom, thank you very much. We'll look forward to seeing you again next month.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go on to Representative Scott Nishimoto's office. Hope anyone joining us this evening. So move on to Representative Andrew Garrett.
Hello, good evening, Chair Ross. This is Melanie.
Thank you, Melanie.
With Representative Andrew Garrett's office. Just very quickly, I dropped his end of session newsletter in the chat. And as Tom mentioned, there are a couple of deadlines coming up regarding the intent to veto, June 25, and the veto deadline of July 10. Keeping it short, if there's any questions or concerns, please give our call, give our office a call. Or if you have them this evening, I can take them back to Representative Garrett. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions from board members? Any questions from any attendees? Seeing none, we really appreciate you being here with us this evening and sharing the report. I'm gonna move on in the agenda. Senator Carol Fukunaga.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the neighborhood board. My name is Rochelle Gregson. I am the very senior staff of Senator Fukunaga, who apologizes for not being able to be here this evening. But she's asked me to report on her behalf. I just want to say, first of all, thank you so much. It's been a very long evening. You sit here so patiently, and you are dealing with some very gritty issues. And I applaud you, and thank you very much for that. Let's see. The report that Senator has submitted, you should have on your website or access to the commission's website. Thank you. What I do want to just highlight, she goes into summarizing a community meeting that we had on May 29 to attempt to deal with some of the neighborhood crime and homeless issues. And as you well know, it's a tough one. But she is working with Representative Biladi on a neighborhood watch, organizing and training program for a neighborhood community security watch. And that's ongoing. Any questions? Thank you.
I'm gonna open up questions to board members and to the public. Seeing none, thank you very much for this report.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on in the agenda to Governor Josh Green's representative. Is Russell Ping with us this evening?
Yes, Chair Ross, I am here. And thank you for tonight's meeting. I did submit Governor's newsletter into the chat room. Also, as Representative Biladi's representative said, the deadline for the governor to veto bills or allow them to become law is fast approaching. He is still accepting comments on those pieces of legislation. So if there are any that you have been tracking and have some comments on them, please submit them. And I submitted a link where you can send those comments directly to the governor's office. Finally, regarding something that council member Say brought up regarding the lights at the skate park, I'm sorry, I wasn't here last week, was the issue, the lights not working, or they're looking for new lights? If someone could clarify that, and then I can look into it with our highways folks.
Thanks, Russell. I believe it's the complete absence of any lighting currently.
Got it. I will take that back to our team and can see what we can do. Thank you.
Which reminds me, today's the solstice, so anyone skater actually had the most light they'll have any day of the year today.
Okay, then I need the lights tonight, so.
By winter would be wonderful. All right, thank you very much for that. Any other questions from board members or any other attendees? All right, we're gonna move to resident and community concerns. We've about five minutes left on the agenda. So we'll be keeping this to, if possible, a 45-second to one minute of remarks. If there's anything that's not currently on the agenda, if anyone would like to raise it. Yes, we can recognize you, Richard. Please go ahead.
Okay, so we received this letter from Calvin Say earlier with the ten, with the Green Street.
Please keep the mic near your mouth.
Well, so anyway, first, like I mentioned earlier, appreciate everything that we've been pushing for, you know, some improvements. But this letter really doesn't tell the truth. I mean, it says, we believe that our tenants have engaged, you know, have not engaged in any criminal activities and stuff. And I have clearly a lot of pictures that I've provided you folks in the last month. And this just happened two days ago with, you know, a kid involved, and the truck was actually in the driveway. And, you know, we called police, and there's like five or six police show up. They're domestic, fighting. So there's a lot of activity going on, which is clearly their state and it's not. And I'm not sure how to address this, you know, like, like, continue with Calvin Say and Senator Fukunaga. And I'm not sure how to address this, you know, like, do I continue with Calvin Saying, Senator Fukunaga? Or how, you know, be, be that this was addressed to you folks or to the board?
Thank you. I think we're gonna have to cut you off there, but to, I want to see if we can get some sort of answer for you. Logan, can you include to the questions to the mayor's representative? What we just heard from Richard about wondering as a neighbor, what potential next steps would do to resolve some of these issues? And then we'll see if we can get an update for you in the next month or two on that one. Yeah. Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Rich. Is there anyone else like to bring something up for resident and community concerns at this time? Yes, please go ahead.
I would just like to bring up striping in our community seems to be lacking on street road striping. You know, the center lane striping and crosswalks. Some crosswalks have been being updated, but a lot needs to be done, including in my neighborhood on Tanlis on Round Top Drive. The striping, you know, fades away quickly with all the rain in our neighborhood. So striping in general for crosswalks and center lane divider needs to be improved ASAP.
So I'd like to, again, highlight the 311 app. You can report with GPS location. That's gonna be almost as effective as bringing directly DTS at one of our board meetings because it does get one of those reports filed. Unfortunately, they're not able to generally do things what we heard before. We're gonna need to have specific locations. I understand there might be a lot of pins for Tanlis, a large geographic area. But that's been the information I've received in the past. I'd like to recognize a member, Clara Santos.
Thank you, Chair. I'll bring up that I'll want on the future agenda. We have the same developer who made 1427 Ernest Street wants to put a monster tower on Ala Pae Street, the dead end up by Punch Bowl. And it is in the Punch Bowl preservation area. And the architectural design violates every tenant of, tenant of the historic preservation guidance. So I have written to the city council and would like to bring that design up, et cetera, for discussion at a future meeting. There's a lot of violations going on, like it's cleared for 24 sewer hiccups, hookups, excuse me. He wants to put 54 units. So it's, it's a huge tower in a bad place. And I'll, I'll bring it up in more detail in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Clara. I think with that, we need to close resident and community concerns at this time. We do have community reports, the Neighborhood Security Watch and the Wahoo Metropolitan Planning Organization. But I would like to skip these items for this month. And the reason is I have been informed with the return of Alolo, which is really fantastic camera quality. My quality is so much improved. We appreciate you. We do probably wanna budget a little more time for closing out. So if there's no objections, I'm gonna move on to announcements. Hearing none, our next regular meeting of the Makiki Lower Punch Bowl Tantil's Neighborhood Board is scheduled to be held Thursday, July 18, 2024, 6:00 PM at Makiki District Park via WebEx. Broadcast can be viewed on Alolo Focus 49 at 9:00 PM on the first Friday of the month and again on the first and third Sunday at 3:00 PM. For social media, you can follow us at facebook.com/makikinb. There's a letters NB as a neighborhood board. And board member contact information can be found on our website. Please review our agenda to see some of our links, such as our maps, that and our often referenced drive, which has many of the documents we referenced this evening. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Go ahead, John. So moved.